We are about to visit with Ellen Hoppenberg, who has a unique and new service for seniors. Ellen, welcome. Tell me the name first of this new company and what services you're offering.
Thank you very much. The company's name is Time Savers for Seniors. And we offer A through Z intensive services. What we try to do is make the lives of seniors and their families that care for them easier. So what that means is that incorporates the idea of going on errands for the seniors and their families, for doing event planning, for doing transitional living exchanges whereby if the senior is moving from the home that they know so well to another place, we will be on receiving end making everything warm and beautiful.
Well, I'm thinking this could be a great comfort to people who are caring for an elderly senior, who can't always be there, or maybe live across the country, because I learned more lessons than this.
Absolutely, as did we. And if I can say, that's exactly why this company was founded. A friend of mine, who just lost her mother, I lost my father last year and my mother prior to that, we lamented one day that, you know, how we felt so squeezed between generations, you know, raising our own families and having our spouses and having full-time jobs and all of that, and still wanting to be everything to everybody, and really just being with our parents, rather than always having to run errands for them, but having some more quality time and that. So we decided that we needed a service like this because we didn't know one existed. When we lived, there wasn't one.
Anybody who's been involved with these care issues knows that it's complex, it's ever-changing, as, you know, one year's problems are not the same as the next. So do you help families anticipate those needs as well?
Absolutely. I mean, having lived through these experiences and knowing what it's like to go through the system and the mazes and what have you, we actually feel that we're pretty informed in that way, that we know what to do. And we also do a referral service, we also do internet searches for families when they don't have the time. So the opposite end of what we do is not only for the seniors, but also for their families. So if they have to be at Mary's birthday party, but they also have to get Little Johnny's birthday party together, we'll help them out with that as well.
Now, before we run out of time, again, the name of the company and how can people contact you?
Time Savers for Seniors.
Time Savers for Seniors.
We're serving the San Fernando Valley and the Ventura County area, and 818-832-8526, or timesaversforseniors.com.
Thanks so much for joining us, Ellen. This is a real treat for us.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Kathy, tell me what we're seeing here with these young kids, serving the seniors?
You know, this was a program that was started as a true intergenerational program, and it's an offshoot of the lunch program where the kids come in and serve lunch to the seniors, which is a workability program. We decided to take it to another level and incorporate now a culinary class, which also is going to have a built-in bakery component where people are going to learn how to start their own business, baking, selling product, and truly working all intergenerational components of the piece of the model.
Look, the kids in high school have to have community service hours. Can they get them here?
Absolutely. They can get community service hours, they can get high school-credit elective hours for their technical electives. And aside from all of that, which I think is the most important piece, is that they get job skills, they get hands-on training, and they get socialization skills, which everybody benefits from.
Here's your green milk.
Thank you.
Enjoy your lunch, everyone.
Thank you.
When you think about the size of the community of seniors coming into the market, we're going to need youngsters in the job place who are able to take care of seniors and understand their needs.
And it allows them the opportunity to get all those components that we just talked about. And you know what? Who doesn't love food? Using food as a medium to, you know, create, you know, jobs and training and socialization for all generations is truly, you know, to me, the best part of the whole...
Well, I agree. This is the chicken soup.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett, from the Department of Animal Services, another of the special services available here in Los Angeles.
And I'm delighted to be able to tell you about a special program that we have, which is Senior Pets for Senior Citizens. And what we know about having companion animals in our lives is that they make us happier, they make us smile, they reduce our blood pressure, and they greet us when we come home from wherever we've been, whether it's a walk or whatever. The other thing that went, as we get older and we get a little bit more sedentary in our lives, having a companion animal probably increases your exercise. You'll get up, you'll take care of your pet, you'll take your companion animal for a little walk, if it's a kitty, you'll clean your litter box, and when you remember to feed your companion animal, that's a reminder that it's time for you to eat too. So, you know, we just know that having a companion animal is the best way to enrich your life and to enrich their life, because they need you too. Each year at Los Angeles Animal Services, we have over 50,000 companion animals that come through our six shelters. So we have a selection that you won't believe until you come and see it. We have kitties of all ages, from kittens to mature cats. I actually would recommend a mature cat, they're a whole lot easier. We have dogs, from puppies to mature dogs. Again, I would recommend a mature dog, because they're a little bit easier to handle and take care of, and we have love in all size packages. So come on down to Los Angeles Animal Services, any one of our six shelters, meet our amazing animals, we have love just waiting for you.
We are visiting now with Ann Love from the DMV, and we have a subject that's very important to the seniors in and around Los Angeles. Ann, welcome. Thank you for coming here.
Thanks.
You are the ombudsman for seniors on behalf of their interest vis-à-vis the DMV, correct?
Yes, as the senior driver ombudsman, I work with seniors who have concerns, inquiries regarding transactions at the Department of Motor Vehicles. I also spend a large part of my time making presentations to senior groups about safe senior mobility.
Well, what are some of the things you do? I mean, do you address senior citizen groups?
Yes.
When they get together, so you can kind of inform them of what's coming?
I think the idea is to bring to mind that there are physical and mental changes that accompany the aging process.
Yes.
And those changes do affect skills necessary for safe driving.
Yes.
And make recommendations how they might use resources, modify driving behaviors, so that they can continue their driving life for no longer. One of the first steps of being a safe driver is recognizing that there are changes.
Yes.
We each age differently, so it's important that each person do a self-assessment to determine where they are. DMV has published a senior guide for safe driving.
Very good.
And in that guide is a self-assessment tool that helps seniors go through their skills, their impairments, and determine just where they are and the kinds of modifications they might need to make.
Moving forward, you mentioned to me before we started the formal part of this interview that people need to do some planning, they do for retirement, but they don't plan for those years when they stop driving. How many years do most people go after they lose their privileges?
Most people will outlive their ability to be a safe driver for seven to 10 years.
Seven to 10 years? Did you hear that?
So what we'd like to do is take it in stages. Start with the self-assessment, recognize what resources are available, whether it's adaptive equipment, whether it's driver retraining, whether it's rehabilitation retraining, driving modification, which may mean eliminating certain things, changing routes so that they are off heavy thoroughfares and onto less traffic, maybe eliminating night driving, freeway driving, those kinds of changes. DMV even offers an area restriction, which says someone might drive in a particular area.
Right, to and from the market and a well-marked route.
Yes.
I can understand that. Some, I guess there's no easy way to say this, but the time does come, and it is very painful within families when you have to tell dad or grandpa, "You just have to give me your keys."
Well, we want the message, we want dad and mom to get the message that driving is not forever. So when that time comes, it won't be a shock to them that they're no longer able to drive. We want them to accept the fact that driving is not forever, to become familiar with alternate transportation that's available.
That's very important, because we do have a lot of little companies and government services, whether it's paratransit, access transit, the numbers that you can call.
There are taxi vouchers, there's some seniors who may not be able to drive, they still be able to use public transportation.
Right.
And there are reduced fees associated with that. So there's a lot available, and we recommend that seniors become familiar with what's available in their community before they reach the point that suddenly they can't drive today.
This is such a large topic and so important to the seniors in and around Los Angeles. I can't thank you enough, Ann Love, for joining us. The senior ombudsman for the DMV, they have a booklet available for you, so you know the address, www.dmv.ca.gov, okay? Pick this up, because it's important. Maybe you can extend that freedom of the road a little bit longer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. And now it's time for our health checkup with Dr. Gill.
We're going to talk about memory loss today. In my practice with the senior citizen population, that seems to be a very common complaint of people. Unfortunately, what we're finding is that they're waiting until way too late to do something about it. They're waiting until they're losing blocks of memory in their life. And really where it should start is these short-term memory losses, like, where did I last leave my keys? What did I have for lunch yesterday? You know, what was the phone number that I dialed this morning to someone who just gave me their phone number? This is where treating memory loss should begin. And so it's not a question of, "I can't remember these blocks of time way in the past," it really starts with short-term memory loss first. And perhaps what we should do is go over this mechanism of short-term memory loss and how it really occurs first. What I've got here is a model of a brain. This is the back half of the brain, and on different parts of the brain, we're just going to talk about one part in particular, it's called the parietal lobe, it's right over in here, and the temporal lobe. The temporal lobe is where a part of the brain sits called the hippocampus. Now, the hippocampus is what's very responsible for memory loss, and different things can affect your hippocampus. For example, a high cortisol, which is a hormone released by your adrenal glands, is very toxic to the hippocampus. So if you're under stress, or if you have adrenal gland dysfunction, it could strongly affect your hippocampus, and you'll find you start getting these lapses in short-term memory. The other part is this temporal lobe here where the hippocampus sits. What you might find is maybe your smell has changed, maybe you smell things that other people don't smell, or perhaps you don't smell things that other people smell. That tells us that there's a portion of this brain here called the temporal lobe that's affected. And because that hippocampus sits right inside that temporal lobe, that tells me that there could be a potential neurological problem here in your temporal lobe and/or hippocampus which is affecting your memory. So how do we fix this? Well, one of the most common things that occur because of the short-term memory loss is toxicity to the brain through inflammation. Now, what do I mean by that? There's literally fire inside your brain. Now, how do you get fire inside your brain? Well, if you don't have a great diet, that's one of the reasons why you might have fire inside your brain. One of the most common things, though, is blood sugar. Blood sugar spikes and blood sugar drops. So one of the easiest things you can do to possibly help out your memory loss is eat regularly, right? Watch your high-sugar foods at the end of the night, start eating every couple hours, don't skip meals. That's one of the easiest things you could do. Another thing is take anti-inflammatory herbal supplements, like fish oils. Fish oils are one of the easiest things you can do to calm down inflammation in your brain, okay? Brain cells hate inflammation, and brain cells hate blood sugar spikes. So keep your blood sugar under control, watch, you know, what you're eating, okay? Don't eat the most obvious things out there that you know you shouldn't eat, and really just watch the inflammatory products that you're ingesting.
Kathy, Larry, thank you so much for sharing your day with us. It's been a wonderful visit, and I hope you enjoyed it too. And thanks for joining us with Aging in L.A.
It's around the past 10 o'clock, and thank you councilmembers Perry and Zion. We are waiting councilmembers Alakon, Cardness, Weezer, Corretz, Corian, Lebon, Parks, Reyes, and Smith. It is now five minutes after 10:00. This will be a quorum call. Thank you, Mr. Cardness, Mr. Lebon, Ms. Perry, Councilmember Zion, Council President, Mr. Garcetti is here. He is councilmember. Mr. Alakon's arriving at 11:00. Mr. Hod is excused. Mr. Roosevelt's leaving at 11:30. Mr. West is excused. We're looking for Mr. Weezer, he's come to chambers. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretz, and Mr. Corian, please come to chambers. Ah, Mr. Reyes, please come to chambers. Mr. Smith, please come to chambers. We're at 6:00, we need 10:00 to begin. Delayed happy birthday to Rick Orlov, correspondent for The Daily. Ms. Perry, good morning, Ms. Perry. Pleasure to see you, Ms. Perry. We're still looking for the quorum. Ms. Weezer, Mr. Corian, Mr. Corretz, please come to chambers. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, please come to chambers. Ms. Perry is here, Mr. Garcetti is here, Mr. Parks is here, Mr. Lebon is here, Mr. Cardness is here. We need the other members to arrive so we can start our meeting. It is now 7:00 after 10:00. We entertain a motion to adjourn to lack of a quorum at 10:15.
Till we get the people's work done.
Well, we need to have the councilmembers here, Mr. Lebon, so we can start the people's work. The council starts at 10:00, and the rest of us have busy schedules, Mr. Lebon. So one more time, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corian, Mr. Corretz, thank you for arriving. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, please come to chambers, so we can begin our meeting. We are now at 7:00. The members looking for 10:00 to start our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardness, thank you, Mr. Corretz, Mr. Lebon, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Councilman Garcetti. We're almost at our quorum. Still looking for Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corian, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, please come to chambers. Again, we're looking for the quorum, and Mr. Weezer, please come to chambers, Mr. Corian, please come to chambers, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, please come to chambers. Begin our meeting for Wednesday, April 13th, it's now 10:11. Eight members, we need 10:00 to begin. Want to again thank Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardness, Mr. Corretz, Mr. Lebon, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, and Council President Garcetti for being here on time. We are awaiting the arrival of Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corian, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith to begin our meeting. Mr. Lebon, if you have a question, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. Any committees in session on the 10th floor?
I do not know that.
No?
Okay. But if we knew, they still know they're supposed to be here for the council meeting. It's now 10:12, three more minutes, we can adjourn due to a lack of a quorum. Mr. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Reyes has arrived. We're at nine members, nine members.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, April 13th, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome members of the public that are here, especially those students who are visiting us from Belmont High School, 11th graders who are here today spending the day in City Hall. day in City Hall, that we get a shot of them out in the audience, I want to welcome them and thank them for being here. Let's give them a round of applause and thank our Belmont students for being here. We'll see if we can get a shot of you guys, that way on channel thirty-five tonight, you can, there you are, see, wave to the cameras, there you go. Anybody who has cable, channel thirty-five tonight, or else you can also view us on, online at la-city dot O R G, which is another great way to follow your city council, you can either watch on cable, you can watch on the internet at la-city dot O R G, or you can listen in on your telephone by calling two one three six two one CITY. That's a service called Council Phone, and you're able to listen in to our committee meetings as well as our full council meetings here. And finally, if you are closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, you can always come to our city council chambers there, and we can see you remotely, and you can testify from Van Nuys, testify from San Pedro, and we're able to see you here in council chambers and on television and through the internet. Our agendas are made available seventy-two hours in advance or twenty-four hours in advance for our special agenda items, and we do have a quorum right now, ten members of our fifteen-member body, so with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardness, Han, Weezer, Caretz, Kikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Roosevelt, Smith, Zine, Garcetti, ten members, President, and a quorum.
All right, first order of business, please.
Uh, approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Labonge moves, and Mr. Caretz seconds, without objection, those minutes from last, yesterday's meeting will be approved, next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Perry seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through today's agenda, we have twenty-three items, and colleagues, if there's any that you wish to call special, please direct your attention to those right now. Items that are not called special will be voting on as a group today, and will, any items that are called special, either by card from the public or by a council member, will be taken up individually, so first items, please.
Mr. President, items one through ten are items known for a public hearing, there has been a request from a member to continue item number eight to May ten.
All right, Mr. Zine, like to continue that, if there's no objection on item eight, we'll continue that till May tenth. Ms. Perry?
Uh, continue items seven and nine until this Friday.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll continue items seven and nine as well till Friday the fifteenth of April. Other items to call special, one through ten. If there are no other special items, let's, do we have any cards on those items?
Yes, sir, we do, we have a card on item number ten.
Okay, we'll call ten special, we'll close the public hearings on one through six, so now we have items one through six before us, council members, if we can please open the roll, Madam Clerk, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those pass unanimously, if we can go to the next items called, uh, next items on the agenda.
Very good, items eleven through sixteen are items for which public hearings have been held, committee reports for items eleven and thirteen have been submitted and distributed to council. Item eleven is a commissioner, would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, let's hold the commission nomination on the desk, number eleven.
Very good, sir, item twelve is an ordinance, would you like to hold that on the desk until twelve members are present?
Yes, ordinances require twelve members on the first reading, and we're still awaiting Mr. Kikorian and Mr. Smith, so hopefully when they get here, we'll be able to take those up. Uh, that leaves thirteen through sixteen, special items, colleagues, thirteen through sixteen. Mr. Cardness.
Sixteen special, please.
All right, Mr. Cardness calls sixteen special. Any other specials? Seeing none, we'll take up thirteen through fifteen now, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved, next items, please.
Mr. President, items seventeen through twenty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection, those are before us now, so we, do we have any cards on these items?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, uh, we've requested call seventeen special for Mr. Zine, there are specials, colleagues, eighteen through twenty-one. Eighteen through twenty-one. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
As approved, Mr. Parks. Nineteen will send forth with, to the mayor for his signature, without any objection. Next two items, please.
Mr. President, items twenty-two through twenty-three are items known for closed session, would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Parks, your guidance on this?
I'd recommend that we go to closed session on twenty-two, and I have to recuse myself on twenty-three.
Okay, but twenty-three you think is okay for open session, otherwise?
You may want to go in closed session.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll take both of them in, in closed. We'll call items twenty-two and twenty-three special for our closed session. Now is time in the meeting for our public comment on items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles, want to thank those members of the public who are here today. If any are Belmont students or anybody else wants to fill out a speaker card, you can speak today too, but we have first Randy Sayer, who is our first speaker, and then Waylon Spencer, actually, before we do that, let's take up item twelve real quick, because we're twelve members, as you're coming up, Mr. Sayer, let's open the roll on twelve, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And then after that, we'll hear from Waylon Spencer, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, honorable city council members, my name is Randy Sayer, I'm a resident of Los Angeles, I work in the city of Burbank, I'm a proud member of IOTC Local seven oh six, and our seventeen hundred members are asking me to ask you to please support the Farmers Field Football Stadium and Los Angeles Convention Center redevelopment project. We see this project and proposal as a win-win for the city of Los Angeles, and we want the jobs, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate your testimony today. Uh, Waylon Spencer is our next speaker, after that, we'll hear from Thomas Robles. Robbs.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the council. I'm, I'm with local, uh...
Can you get a little closer to the microphone, just that way we'll hear you a little better? Thank you.
All right.
Perfect.
I'm with local, uh, four sixty reinforced ironworkers, I reside in Norwak, California. Having the Forest Football Stadium in downtown will bring more business, conventions, and tours into LA, which means more good jobs and stronger local economy for everyone. We need the city's council to support this project, and also don't forget the, the Wilshire Grant, uh, project, thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you very much, sir, uh, is it Thomas Robbs? Or Robles, okay. Yes, Robles, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing?
My name is Thomas Robles, and I'm with, uh, Local four sixteen reinforced ironworkers, and I think you guys know that we are in trouble here. Not only are jobs leaving California, but now people are leaving California. Our members are going out of town, out of state, to find work, when they're losing their homes, their cars, their wife, because of financial troubles. We need to get Farmer Stadium started, we need to get Wilshire Grant started, we need to get the harbor started, we need work for LA, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Justin Walters is our next speaker, after that is Tommy Simmers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning, council members, my name is Justin Walters, I'm also a resident of Los Angeles, um, I'm a plumber from Local seventy-eight, and personally, I've been out of work for over a year now, and I'm here to support Farmers Field that you've been considering to put myself back to work, to be able to provide personally for my family, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, hang in there. Tommy Simmers is our next speaker, and then we'll go to Van Nuys, and William Sizemore will be our first speaker in Van Nuys, good morning.
Hello, good morning, I'm, uh, Tommy Simmers, I'm, uh, in favor of the, the football stadium, I hope you guys consider it, I've been unemployed for, uh, fourteen months, I'm a seventy-eight union plumber, and I go, I hope you guys approve of it, I'd like to get back to work, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. William Sizemore is our next speaker in Van Nuys, he'll be followed by Walter Burton, also in Van Nuys, good morning, sir.
Good morning, council, I'm William Sizemore, still unemployed, IBW electrician. I'm here in support of the Farmers Field project, which will stimulate the economy and get construction trades back on its feet. Let's bring jobs back to LA, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir, for speaking today. Walter Burton is our next speaker in Van Nuys, he'll be followed by Henry Marine.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
Walter Burton, IBW Local eleven, I'm journeyman wireman, electrician, and, uh, here also in support of Farmers Field for the reasons stated before, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well, if we can send fourteen and fifteen forthwith without objection, our next speaker is Henry Marine in Van Nuys, then we'll come back here to council chambers for Mark McClellan.
Morning.
Good morning.
Last week, I addressed the fact that the CEO and city attorney failed to direct anyone to actively account for the time and funds of city employees. Conse- in lieu, in lieu of, instead, what they did is ask for members to waive them, release them from liability for their failure to legally serve the people of the city of LA. MOU thirty-five, paragraph eight shows, workers hired under this agreement shall be paid according to Los Angeles prevailing wage, trade prevailing pay schedule, at ninety percent of the prevailing basic wage, and one hundred percent of applicable benefits shall be provided to union trusts. Therefore, the city skimmed ten percent off the prevailing wage rate, and donated money to unions for work of city employees. Paragraph eight of the MOU thirty-five shows, there shall be no minimum length of time of employment as a city work, city employee, however, the maximum length of time of employment for workers hired under this agreement shall be no more than one year, AKA, one thousand hours, AKA, six months at full-time, or fifty weeks or, or more at part-time. Consequently, money is still being commingled in, of city employees is still being commingled in union trust accounts, and the city is still skimming ten percent off the prevailing wage rate. And this is going to be disastrous for, for both union sector plans and public sector plans. I think some of these people need to go get a job in Wisconsin feeding pigs and hogs, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marine, our next speaker is Mark McClellan, and then Armin Akhbarjanian will follow him, good morning, sir.
Morning, um, my name is Mark McClellan, and I am affiliated with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, um, I went through approximately thirty-nine months of, of identity theft, and as, uh, as is personal and very, very geared to, to others and countless others, and myself, the scrutiny for holding all cannibaling, and, and, um, everybody can cut city waste is paramount, damage control, and the way to penalize, rehabilitate, and recover as individuals, uh, new for the first time, city council members, or, or all others affiliated with city, and, and all others in Los Angeles County. I believe new members should be given the opportunity to have a say, without giving the impression or atti- attending that we're going to, to make a lot of money. Individuals change, individuals go away, individuals are still taking from the city, therefore, those in public service, given equal and service to register with the city council, be provided token transportation, maybe other things, and are service-based and redirected to other levels of service in city, local, and state levels, if they choose so to do. As an individual in Los Angeles County, uh, Santa Monica now I reside, I think it's very, very important, very, very important for me to go to the, the downtown, uh, police station, I, I am again being usurped, I am again being, um, my identity is tried to have been stolen, I have personal things very dear to me that, that have now caused me to become very, very disappointed and hurt.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Armin Akhbarjanian is our next speaker, after that is Eddie Jones.
Respectable city council members, you fellow Angelenians, as a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, I proudly announce that I will run for, uh, for the seat of, uh, California, um, uh, State Assembly, uh, you know, um, you know, and will try to unseat reactionary incumbent. Actually, uh, as a liberal Democrat, I demand polit- uh, progressive politics to be implemented from the city council member, because if they engage in reactionary politics, uh, they're likely they will follow, uh, um, you know, uh, the sorrow, the, the sad fate of those city of Bell council members who were indicted, prosecuted by federal attorney on corruption charges. If you want, you know, to thrive as a politician, you should conduct progressive politics, I demand issuing, uh, licenses, marriage license, same-sex marriage licenses to homosexual lesbians in the city of Los Angeles. I demand stopping, you know, end to, uh, in human practice, practice of euthanasia of animals in South Central, uh, um, you know, South Central, uh, animal shelters, I demand, uh, paving the roads in the South Central area, and being, uh, with, uh, with huge cracks and potholes in the South, uh, on the Jefferson Avenue, and on Cranston Boulevard, you know, and that, uh, when I call the Department of Transportation, they, they did nothing to, you know, to pave, uh, was, to fix those potholes. Actually, I demand that, uh, with, uh, closing down all those, uh, dope dealing, ripping off, uh, canates, uh, Rambo canates, uh, so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, because we violate Federal Control Substance Act, and fifty-six percent of Californians will side with me, because fifty-six percent of Californian rejected Proposition eighteen, rejected legalization of marijuana, according to MSNBC reports, at least, and I believe that, uh, which, uh, city council members should raise tax against wealthy individual homeowners, and, uh, uh, expedite issuance of section eight thousand vouchers.
Thank you, Mr. Norjanian, Eddie Jones is our next speaker, and then La White.
Good morning to the city council, my name is Eddie Jones, president of the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association, I help people with civil, constitutional, human, and amendment rights, as a citizen of the United States of America, and a member of the city of Los Angeles, which I have been for the last fifty-one years, I'm very concerned about the well-being of our city, I'm concerned about the people who vote the city council into office, when the young man was killed, Devin Brown, I worked with that, when the, when the street, the kid was killed on rodeo, I worked with that, I helped put a street light there, I Dorsey Hyde with Herb Weston, at Outobahn, when the field was tore up, I helped to build the field there, I do a lot of work in this city, and I don't get paid for the work I do, God gives me the pay that I get, but every elected official has a job, and their job is to hear from the citizens of the city of Los Angeles, it's extremely important and very imperative that we hear from the members of the city who vote people into the seats that they sit in. This young lady has wrote a letter and been trying to get a meeting with mayor for ninety days, the young man comes down, he talks to her, he brushes her off, it's not fair, she's a citizen, she has a right to have a meeting, to be heard, she's homeless, she needs a hand, and this is what you all fight for, to give people a hand when they need a hand, and I'm sure each one of you have seen me in the newspaper and on TV, I don't play, I believe in justice, and justice is not served if we have a city council that can't reach out to the people of the community and give them the help that they need when they need it. I'm asking you, please, analyze and evaluate her situation and give her a hand, and I'm not going to stop, I could be the mayor of the city, I just haven't decided to run yet, I could be a city council member, but when I do get ready to run, I will be a force to be reckoned with, trust me, when I come to work, I'm going to roll up my sleeves, and I'm going to help the people in the city of Los Angeles, and that's what my job is going to be, and I'm going to do it whether I get paid or not, we have a responsibility, let's get to work, let's help these people save their homes, and let's do our job, we're citizens in the city of Los Angeles, we shouldn't be bankrupt in LA.
Thank you, Ms. White, did you want to speak today? Were you, yeah, your card was, go ahead.
Good morning, I'm here again, I was here last week within seven days, I'm back again because I came with Mr. Eddie Jones from the NAACP and the Los Angeles City Rights Association. I'm here today because my problem has not been resolved, I want a fifteen-minute meeting with the mayor to see if we can get everything resolved, and I believe that's the only way to get it done, thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you, Ms. speak, Rick, I'm sorry, we can't, there's a thing right there, we can't yield under council rules to anybody else, our next speaker is Rick Nightingale, I know that Ms. Perry's staff has been helping with, her chief of staff with her, our next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, yeah, they really, uh, bought the airports and all that, I really got a kick out of that, that, uh, that, uh, the government says, no, I'm sorry, you can't close Van Nuys and Burbank, you know, people turned around and they moved by these airports, and the whole houses sometimes are cheaper, and then they come and snivel afterwards, same as Alarcon, he turns around, and he lived right around the corner, for his parents lived right around the corner by my parents, way back in the fifties, and it, we were right over the glide path for Burbank, yeah, we heard the planes, that's just one of those things, I buy a house over here in Sherwood Forest, paid a lot of money for my house, and I'm on the glide path, that's one of the things that you do, you buy next to an airport or something like that, do your homework, if you want to live in the area, suffer with it, so I'm really glad, uh, the government kind of told you people, stuff it. So I'm really glad the government kind of told you people, stuff it, live with it, and leave us alone. Because it's ridiculous. You live by an airport and then you come and snivel after it. The planes are a lot quieter than they were back when, when the planes are about five-hundred feet off the ground, like over in Burbank. But let's get back to yesterday, I talked about Brown. I'm telling you people, it's a big scam regarding all the unions putting up all this money. None of the, even the city council, you're not going after to turn around and change these, the union giving you money and so forth regarding, get rid of it. Just get rid of it. I disagree with the unions giving the money to all of you people. It's crazy. I didn't like it when I was active in the union before I retired, and I disagree with it now. Same as one of the union reps around got on me here the other day saying that, well, this sounds like you representing a union. I'm not representing you. I'm representing myself. And I think it should be illegal for the union to turn around and give as much money as they do, because it's just ridiculous. And get out of the pension programs with these unions that the city and the state have no business having anything to do with the pension programs. They should be on their own, that the people are not responsible to having, being paid when they turn sour. Thank you.
And we'll close our general public comment for today. We'll turn to the public comment on item number ten next. Our first speaker there is Derek Agahay. Sorry if I mispronounced that. And then John Michael DeChiara. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Derek Archer, resident of California. I am here because I've been pushed around and I've been actually stopping access to my own property through this road. I recorded this property about seventeen, eighteen years ago, a family, hoping that we're going to build this property, and it will be all retirement home for a whole family. It's about six lots there. And when I bought this property fifteen years ago, the easement of the road, the actual prescriptive easement, was given to me by the previous owner who had him from previous owner to have an access to my property, and it was done forever, perpetuity. I have been stopped to go through this road since two thousand and five, since they started the construction there. I have brought in down the city of Los Angeles, they have removed the private gates four times, according to records and everything, and yet there's still another gate out there. Supposedly it's not permanent gate, but it's locked up, and I can't have an access to my own property. I've been trying to get their attention, their property owners' attention, that I have an easement to this property by prescription, and I do have all the papers. We owned this property for seventy years, and somehow I have not been able to get a hold of them. So I'm here to reject, and I'd like to have the access to my own property through this road. Thank you very much.
John Michael DeChiara, and then Richard Arthur Love.
Thank you for the pronunciation. My name is correct. I'm an executor for the Ogje estate for Derek and Miriam. It's been in, in newspapers that Paul Allen is the owner of most of the properties up on Angelo Drive, and, and about five, five to seven years ago, there was an offer to purchase Mr. Ogje's property, and Derek turned down the offer. Since then, Derek's riparian rights have been violated. Mr. Allen and the owners of the property above his six lots, put in a drainage system right above his property, probably several hundred feet down, directed right at those lots and eroded his property. Since two thousand and four or five, they put up gates on Angelo Drive, which was public property. The city engineers came out and told them to move it. They moved it back, and they moved it back, and they moved it back. Since then, there's still a gate with locks on both ends of Angelo Drive, and Mr. Ogje's been denied and actually told to leave by gate guards during this whole process, so he's been denied. This road needs to remain a public road. He's used this road to access his property for seventeen years, and all of a sudden somebody comes in with a lot of money and a lot of notoriety, and he's stopping them. And certainly, Mr. Ogje doesn't have the kind of finances to fight this, so we're asking you to vote against making this a private road, because we feel like his rights will further be denied and his property, property will further be eroded.
Thank you. Richard Arthur Love is next. After that is Tom Stemnuck.
Members of the city council, thank you for hearing this issue today.
Go ahead, we're starting.
I, I don't want to be redundant and repeat any of the things that Mr. DeChiara just stated, but I was retained as an architectural consultant and reviewed the property ownership and the history of the property and created a report regarding this issue, which I'd be more than happy to offer a council, a copy of, if they have reason to review the issue. Mr. Ogje's rights have been seriously violated. His property has been seriously damaged, and it's not been addressed. This small section of Angelo Drive that is being attempted to turn into a private road is just a furtherance of the obstruction of Mr. Ogje's longstanding prescriptive easement into his real estate, which has been held special, and he's had long-term plans to develop for his family and himself. I'd like you to, if you would, consider this issue, to deny the request for vacating Angelo Drive and schedule a review of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Stemnuck.
Yes, I'm Tom Stemnuck. I represent the Filbert Trust, which is the owner of the property which surrounds this portion of the street that's being proposed for vacation. This vacation was approved five or six years ago. The conditions were not fulfilled, and it was refiled. The property we're talking about is about three, three hundred feet wide or long and twenty-six feet wide. The assertions that there is an easement across the property, I would reject. The property was purchased by my client. We've had title reports. There are no easements across the property. If, if the gentleman was to claim a prescriptive right, he should go to civil court and try and vest that right, but we do not believe they have any rights across the property.
Thank you. That'll close the public comment on item number ten. Are there any council members who wish to be heard on this item? If not, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Please open the roll.
I know.
Mr. Kretz.
I'm actually not familiar with the controversy surrounding this item, so I wonder if we shouldn't delay this item and put it back on a later calendar.
Okay. Do you want to give us a date for proposed continuance? We have to do it to date certain.
Whatever the next appropriate date is, it'd be fine.
Okay, this Friday is our next meeting, April fifteenth?
Yeah, that would give me a little time to investigate this. I wasn't aware that this was controversial.
Okay, there's no objection, we'll continue then. Item number ten till the fifteenth this Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, and, and, Mr. City Attorney, there's no time. So that'll, that'll come back on Friday. Mr. LeVange?
Members, if I could introduce a special group of students, the Koalas from Kentwood Elementary School from Westchester, California, home, Bill Rosenthal, councilman, please stand and be recognized by the city council. These great young people are visiting John for our chambers here at Los Angeles City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kentwood Elementary, Westchester, California.
All right, welcome. Great to have you guys all here. You can see yourself on TV right now. There you go. See? It's time for your close-up. I'd like to ask Mr. Freddy Carrillo to come forward to the table. Our next item is the commission nomination of Mr. Carrillo, and it's a nomination that I made through the advice of Mr. Zein. So if Mr. Zein wants to open up the comments for the Quality and Productivity Commission, thank you for your offer to serve.
Good morning, Honorary Council Members.
Please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Carrillo, I know you have your cheering section with you today.
I'm Alan Turaj back here.
You have your posse here.
Yeah.
Joining you. I'm very impressed with the resume. We nominated you for this because of your activity in the community. Assistant Planner, City of Moore Park. You worked for the CRA internship, veterinary technician, Warner Center Pet Clinic, a master's in public administration, neighborhood council president, Orange Line Extension, Warner Center Pacific Plan. Well-rounded. Why do you want to do this? Didn't your mother teach you more than that?
Actually, when I was first offered the appointment, being a commissioner for the Equality and Productivity Commission was actually surprising, because it's a commission that serves the public, which has been something I've been doing for the past few years, working for the City of Moore Park and the planning department.
But you, but you live where?
I live in Canoga Park.
And what is Canoga Park?
Canoga Park is all-American city.
Okay, good, all right.
Which is the most diverse city in the city of Los Angeles. But I mean, I think providing the community service to everyone in the community is what we are here for as a public servant, and I really would want to implement my skills and my experience in the commission and hopefully either make a difference.
And that's the key, is that, that is a very, very important commission in these hard economic times with the financial situation. We need people involved in this government that understand the quality and the productivity is of key importance. It's not always about how much money, but the quality of the work that we serve the public. And that's what that commission's all about, quality and productivity of the employees that work for the people of Los Angeles. Your mom, obviously, in that family raised you to succeed, and looking at your resume, you have succeeded in that endeavor. And I was very impressed with you on the neighborhood council and how you coordinated activities in the neighborhood council, not knowing that you worked in another city, but your dedication, devotion to the community where you live and grew up in. You started school there, didn't you?
I, well, I grew up by my Carter Park area, but I did move to the San Fernando Valley about eighteen years ago.
Okay. And then just continued in your involvement in the community.
Exactly. I mean, I went to middle school, high school, and from move on to college. And being the first generation here in this country, receiving that college education has been also overwhelming, but at the same time, very proud on my side and on my family.
And I know that, I saw your mom arrive here with you this morning, who's very pleased to see her son and some friends from the community that are also here. Any comments from you on what you plan to do on this commission?
I just want to add that I'm very excited and just to be part of this. I never thought in my life that I would be involved in this type of system, the government, and I just feel that having the experience in community service and also working for the City of Moore Park and serving the community in that area could also benefit me and the city and hopefully implement my ideas and experience into the commission and make a difference.
And if we can get more people like you involved in the community and the city, we'd have a much better city. Everybody pull up their sleeves and make it better.
I'm extremely looking very forward to everything and the experience.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrillo. What, can you give me an example of what you would like to see come out of this commission? Do you have, do you have an idea of some of the things you would like to, to work on or improve?
Sure. Oh, okay, thanks. I would personally like to maybe see working closely with departments, maybe the commission either inviting the departments into the commission meetings, or actually implementing some type of workshops in the departments and making sure that they're actually providing the service to the community that they should be providing, and making sure that everyone or the public is being acknowledged, listened, and also providing that service that they're looking for.
Are you of the mindset or the opinion that when somebody improves their, say, their workplace skills, it actually improves outside of the workplace as well for that individual?
Definitely. I, my first job was working at a Hallmark store, and I'm pretty sure many people are familiar with the Hallmark store. You come in, everyone greets you. That's the type of service that I think we're looking, that the public wants, is to be acknowledged and to make sure that they're being served, that serves that they're looking for. And I believe that with my experience and my skills, I could provide, provide that to the commission and hopefully implement my ideas into it.
Good, good. If you don't mind me asking, what was your first paying job? And how old were you?
I was working at a Hallmark store. I started working at age of sixteen.
Sixteen. Well, that's, that's great experience. And if you don't mind me asking, you don't have to answer this question, it's a bit personal. What do your parents do for a living?
My mom works actually at a Hallmark store too. In fact, she started working with me a few years later as my supervisor, but... So from that point on, that was a different story, but, and my dad worked at a busboy at a Gladstone's restaurant on Malibu Beach.
So you basically understand service, right?
In regards to the government service?
No, just service in general, when it comes to human beings rendering service, whether they work at a Hallmark store, at a Gladstone's, or for the city of L.A.
I personally believe, once you walk in and you're looking for customer service, you're most likely you're going to go back to that same location. And I feel that that's what the public wants and needs, is that to make sure that they feel comfortable in going back to the same location and not being afraid of asking the questions that they need to be answered.
And you have some college degrees, I understand? What are they?
I have a bachelor's in urban studies and planning from Cal State Northridge, and I'm currently working in my public, public administration at Cal State Northridge as well.
Okay, so you're looking, you're right now studying to get a master's degree?
Yes. Hopefully, I'll be finishing at the end of this year.
Okay, excellent. Do you know how much you're going to get paid for this commission?
Yes, zero.
Zero, okay. But do you understand the value of your, your commission work?
Definitely. I've been doing community service for the past five or six years with the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, and I've devoted a lot of hours to that Neighborhood Council. I was a president for two and a half years, and I'm still currently a board member, not adding to any other organization I'm involved, and that's also not paid, so I'm still, I'm welcome to do more community service for the city.
Well, I'm sure you're going to do a great job. You're going to make us very, very proud, and then also at the same time, understand, and I'm sure you understand that the work that you're going to give to the city is priceless, and I just want to thank you for rendering your service to the city, even though the pay isn't very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
Hey, congratulations on your appointment. I, I didn't hear what college you said you went to.
Cal State Northridge.
And you got a degree in?
I have my bachelor's in urban studies and planning, and I'm working on my master's for public administration.
Both from Cal State Northridge?
Correct.
I think he's exceptionally well-qualified, and that's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And, Mr. Carrillo, this, all these questions, I think we're celebrating the fact that you're here.
Thanks.
And that we want to essentially uplift your spirit and thank you for your contribution to the city. I was looking at your resume, and as a planner, I couldn't help but notice how much of a planning background you have. Urban Studies and Planning, BA, Cal State Northridge, right now, master's in public administration. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
When it comes to this commission, there's one thing I, I want to, I want to give you a challenge. As a planner, looking at how we manage our real estate, and I know you know about air rights, I know you know about zoning, looking at a strategy that says, the property we own as a city, we could attract more investment as owners of these properties to create, to create relief for the surrounding communities, but attract business and create jobs. Because we have tremendous properties in very strategic places, but we need to influence the process and be more efficient how we move our real estate. And that's a skill set that we need to develop more efficiently. I don't want to be negative with our city family, but it is a trend that I think we should be more opportunistic with. So I ask you, is that an approach, a challenge that you would find within your scope of work or experience as a commissioner?
I believe that anyone is going through this entire type of issue with the economy. Everyone is having a hard time attracting businesses to the area, and I personally think that working with the community maybe could be a good help or a good start, also revitalizing and maybe aesthetically wise, making the area more appealing, that would attract visitors, attract new businesses into the area.
I think that's key, understanding what the community wants, understanding how they want to define their own space, by giving them that first input, because that's where the buy-in occurs, and that's where we can make things happen. I thank you for that answer. Look forward to working with you, and I stand here to support you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, members, and congratulations again on the nomination. Proud to play a small... Proud to play a small role through Mr. Zine's recommendation. I think we all know you're going to do very well, but we have one last late council member who would like to say his good words as well.
Let's just say congratulations, but also I want to acknowledge that Michael Jones, who's a eighth district resident and his company Success Management is also the chair of this Quality and Productivity Committee and also the chair and president of the Crenshaw Chamber. And I just want to make this knowledge.
Absolutely, thank you for your service and we appreciate you very much. You'll be the toughest supervisor he's had since his mother at Hallmark store. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll and take a vote on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, round of applause for our commission.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, good luck and do well. We'll go next to item number sixteen, which has been called special by Councilmember Kardnis on item number sixteen. Could we put sixteen over just, hold it a few seconds? Okay, sure. Number seventeen, Mr. Zine, item number seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yep.
Seventeen. Parking. Mr. President, this deals with the ordinance to amend the LAMC to establish flexible vehicle parking rates at the convention center. How much is the highest, do we have a representative here on this? If the convention center can come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
We have an issue with establishments not paying the parking tax and we just want to make sure that the convention center is receiving that ten percent and that's coming in without any problems.
Absolutely, council member. My name is Agnes Cole, Senior Management Analyst to Los Angeles Convention Center. We...
They, they, put the microphone closer.
Sorry. Agnes Cole, Senior Management Analyst to Los Angeles Convention Center. Currently, the convention center does collect parking rates at twelve dollars per vehicle. Last fiscal year, we remitted over five hundred thousand dollars in parking tax to the general fund. We will continue that process. We do estimate about one hundred thousand dollars in parking revenue in the first twelve months of implementing this ordinance and that would translate to approximately ten thousand more parking dollars to the general fund.
So the convention center parking is paying the rightful share that they're obligated to pay?
Absolutely.
Okay, that solves that problem. And what's the highest rate we can see charged at the convention center during a high-profile event? Do the, does a twelve-dollar increase at certain?
Yes.
Okay.
The twelve dollars is expected to increase at a high-profile, high-attendance events. We have seen other parking lots in the area charge as much as forty dollars during high-profile events.
Forty dollars?
Yes. We would certainly look at the marketplace and ensure that our rates are commensurate with the parking lots within walking distance of the center.
And if it goes up, how do we then adjust that ten percent? How do we keep track of that since it's a cash business?
Each day, it's more than a cash, we take credit cards as well.
Okay.
And so we reconcile parking receipts on a daily basis. We account for how many transactions are at each price point and then the ten percent tax is calculated based on that.
So you have proper documentation to make sure it's all done properly?
Yes, we do.
So you're not estimating?
No, we don't estimate that tax.
And the adjustment, we will then receive our fair share as it goes up. I don't know if it's going to go up to forty dollars, which is obviously extremely expensive, but whatever it goes up to, ten percent comes off of that particular, but normally it's, you say, twelve dollars?
Yes.
Is that for how many hours?
All-day parking.
All-day parking for twelve?
No in-and-outs.
No in-and-outs?
Yes.
So if they leave, they're going to have to pay another twelve dollars to come back in?
Yes.
And is there sufficient parking in that area with the convention center parking lot?
Yes, we have, convention center operates over five thousand six hundred spaces and we find that perhaps maybe eight to ten days of the year, we are overflowing capacity. That generally comes with the auto show, E3, really high-profile events that attract a lot of visitors. Normally, we do not open all of our lots.
And the lots that are operated are supervised?
Yes.
And you have a, a system in place to make sure it's done, the collection on a proper?
Yes, we have a parking system and we have internal controls in place to audit and ensure that the proper monies are collected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn, then Mr. Kukroyan and Mr. Lavange. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. College, this is really about us trying to run the convention center like a private contractor would and we've been stuck at the convention center with some outdated restrictions that if it was run by a private company, probably wouldn't have. I mean, it's our own administrative code that regulates, you know, our parking rates and allows the general manager to only raise it above twelve dollars in some specific areas, but doesn't allow the general manager to lower the parking rates if across the street it's lower, which sends, you know, customers across the street. This is very similar to what we did recently where we had flexible pricing at our convention center at times maybe when it's, it's a little lower in terms of conventions coming or say, a convention has booked it and, and then drops out for some reason and we're maybe allowed to give some discounts, again, just based on the, the general manager view of what the market is asking for. So this is really, I want to thank Mr. Parks for bringing this forward because this is another way that we'll, at the end of the day, probably get more revenue. It's hard to believe that by lowering the parking rates, we're going to get more revenue, but many people tell me they don't park at the convention center for certain events because across the street it's maybe seven dollars. So this just allows us to be lean and mean and be flexible in terms of our parking rates. We can raise the rates above twelve dollars if we feel like the market demands it or we can lower it to as low as five dollars if we also feel like that will draw in more customers and more revenue. I think this is a good idea, particularly in light of a potential stadium and a, and a complete remodel of our convention center. I think this is, again, making us more flexible, making us smarter and giving our general manager the authority to really run that convention center in a way that the market demands. So I think this is a great idea. Again, it just follows what we did with plus flexible pricing in terms of booking conventions. So I think this is a good idea and I hope we get support for this this morning on the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. We have next, Mr. Kukroyan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a, a great move towards trying to maximize revenues in, with market principles and I think it's a very good step. The one question I had was the cap that's based on private parking operators within a quarter of a mile. It seems to me that there would be occasions, some like you mentioned, the auto show, where the attraction is the convention center, that the convention, parking in the convention center has value that's greater than parking in a lot a quarter of a mile away. So why, why is there any limitation on it at all? Why don't we just let the market dictate what the parking fee should be?
We want to be cognizant of the public's proximity to the convention center. We, we do believe that a quarter mile is a reasonable walking distance to the facility and we're not sure that patrons would pay a premium to the Los Angeles Convention Center for that quarter mile. We have several lots that are very close, that are within maybe five minutes of the convention center at the most and we want to ensure that we are competitive within that arena, more specifically than the outer lots, especially during really nice weather. We would be concerned with lowering our rates too much in, in the wintertime when it's raining because we believe that proximity would justify then a little bit of a higher rate.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you look at parking around most major events in the city, a couple of blocks from the location makes a big difference in the parking rate. So I would feel very comfortable just entrusting that decision to management rather than putting an artificial cap on it, but I think this is a good step forward and I'm going to support it. But I would suggest as we move forward that we examine whether that cap is, is serving a purpose or is unduly and artificially limiting the potential revenues that might be able to be derived.
We would certainly monitor that and adjust our rates accordingly and report back as necessary.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom Lavange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eric Garcetti. Just a couple of questions. What are the other rates? Does AEG have any parking in that area?
Yes, AEG has parking for the Nokia Theater, which is right across the street.
What are their rates compared to your rates?
We have similar rates. We do not undercut each other per se.
Good.
So that we are truly a cooperative campus there.
This is good and I like what's being said this morning. Thank you for your leadership. Is anybody from, who administers the parking tax here? There's a question that Mr. Zine brought up. Because I thought, and Mr. Garcetti, in your district, not in mine, because you're a much hipper guy than me, they have parking lots that they charge eighty dollars to go into these nightclubs. Do you know that? So do that means that the tax should go up if it's eighty dollars? Right, but we don't know that. So I think there's some, is there any review being done on that?
We have a proposed valet ordinance right now that we're waiting from the city attorney's office.
Very good.
That would address that exactly.
Okay, and also I think we should also request too, because we're talking about parking tax, that the parking tax goes to help many important transportation issues, so some type of signage should be there as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a very, a minor thing. One of the things on the reprint of the actual ordinance and some of them, the decimal point is illegible and reading it almost looks like it's twenty-five miles as opposed to point two five. And so I just would like to make sure the clerk, now, Ms. Hahn's motion is done with the bold type, which is clear.
I'll, I'll second your decimal review.
Yeah, decimal review. And that's just a matter when you read it initially, because some of the copies basically let out that decimal point.
Okay, got it, absolutely. I'll make sure that's there. If there's no other comments, go ahead and prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I think number sixteen were all answered. Mr. Kardnis, what's on forthwith on that objection?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item number sixteen, I wanted to clarify something with the department and I have all my questions answered. The item as it is posted is excellent, just fine. Thank you very much.
Nobody else wishes to be heard on sixteen? Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Alright, that is approved. We'll now go in accordance with California state law in a closed session, executive session, to discuss two legal matters that are before the city. And if we have to take any action in open session, we'll come back and do that. If we could please clear the room, except for council and city staff. Thank you. Thank you.[193.95]
We're back in open session if we can take the two items before us, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, item 22, there is a recommendation to pay judgment for appellate attorney's fees and appropriation for outside counsel services and experts in the amount of $1,057,798.60 in the case entitled Dillingham, Ray Wilson, et al. versus City of Los Angeles, as well as to execute a new contract for outside counsel services with the law firm of Best, Best, and Krieger, and appropriate $600,000 for future outside counsel fees and costs.
Okay, on item 22, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
As approved, 23, Mr. Parks will recuse himself if we can walk through that settlement as well.
Very good, item 23, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $385,000 in the case entitled Carinae Smith versus City of Los Angeles and others.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Go ahead and post and refer those, next order of business.
There is an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Carrick requests to arrive at 11 o'clock on April 19 due to personal business, a motion is required.
What would we be down to there, how many members?
I believe that brings us down to 11, sir.
Okay, I'll make the motion, Mr. Zine seconds, that excuse is granted without objection.
Very good, Mr. President, the desk is clear.
All right, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Thank you.
Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Sidney Harmon, who's husband of my friend, Congresswoman Jane Harmon, and, you know, just a well-known, great American. Sidney passed away last night from complications from leukemia, he lived a long, great life, he was 92 years old. He was born in 1918 to American parents in Montreal, one of nine children, including a twin sister, he grew up in New York, he graduated from the City University of New York in 1939 and received a doctorate from New York's Union Institute. The path of Sidney Harmon's long career took him from the electronics industry to government, academia, and finally, the fourth estate. Harmon's name is familiar to nearly everyone who grew up in a home with a high-fidelity stereo sound system. In 1953, he founded Harmon Carden Incorporated, an electronic pioneer that developed an aesthetically pleasing home stereo system with cutting-edge sound. They became the first manufacturers to put an amplifier, a preamp, and radio tuner into a single unit that looked like a piece of furniture, we all had one. In 1977, he was picked by President Jimmy Carter to be Deputy Secretary of Commerce. In 1980, at 62, Harmon married his second wife, his Janie, as he affectionately called her, was 27 years his junior, and Jane, of course, as we all know, would become a member of Congress in 1992. Sidney, a philanthropist, bought Newsweek last year, his passion for the arts and philanthropic impulses led him to provide funding for Washington DC Sidney Harmon Hall, a popular performance space and home of Washington's Shakespeare Theatre Company. From heart, he could recite long passages from Shakespeare, or Abraham Lincoln, or Alfred Lloyd Tennyson, and would often regale dinner party guests with an apt quote. Anyone who attended a Jane Harmon event would be treated to Sidney's favorite quote from Tennyson's Ulysses, "Though much is taken, much abides, and though we are not now that strength which in the old days moved earth and heaven, that which we are, we are; one equal temper of heroic hearts made weak by time and fate, but strong in will, to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." My thoughts and prayers are with Sidney, Jane, their family, he survived by his wife Jane, children Lynn, Gina, Barbara, Paul, Daniel, Justine, stepchildren Brian and Hillary, and 10 grandchildren, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenoff, I'd like to co-present.
And I appreciate what Ms. Hahn said, but I've known Sidney for a long time, and he was a constituent of mine, and the last time I saw him, his energy was incredible. I introduced Jane at an event, and I worked on my introduction, to be candid with you, and when it was over, he came running over to me and he said, "Bill," he said, "I've never heard it better said than what you did." And Jane looked at me, and we laughed, and we hugged some more, but I'd like to add a little bit to what my colleague just said. In the 60s, Sidney was an active opponent of the Vietnam War, and for a year taught African-American pupils in Prince Edwards County, Virginia, after public schools there were closed in a notorious effort to avoid desegregation. From 1968 to 1971, he was president of Friends World College, a Quaker institution in Suffolk County, and in 1973, he earned a doctorate from the Cincinnati-based Union Institute and University. There's a lot more to say, but it was said, and as we once did a memorial here for Joe Sorel, there are many of us who can speak from the heart about a relationship with someone who's impacted our lives. I've known him well for 30 years, and I saw how Jane, after they met during the Carter administration, they fell in love, and they became a very strong, feeding off of-
We're back in open session if we can take the two items before us, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, item 22, there is a recommendation to pay judgment for appellate attorney's fees and appropriation for outside counsel services and experts in the amount of $1,057,798.60 in the case entitled Dillingham, Ray Wilson, et al. versus City of Los Angeles, as well as to execute a new contract for outside counsel services with the law firm of Best, Best, and Krieger, and appropriate $600,000 for future outside counsel fees and costs.
Okay, on item 22, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
As approved, 23, Mr. Parks will recuse himself if we can walk through that settlement as well.
Very good, item 23, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $385,000 in the case entitled Corina Smith versus City of Los Angeles and others.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Go ahead and post and refer those, next order of business.
There is an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Coretts requests to arrive at 11 o'clock on April 19 due to personal business, a motion is required.
What would we be down to there? How many members?
I believe that brings us down to 11, sir.
Okay, I'll make the motion, Mr. Zahn seconds, that excuse is granted without objection. Very good, Mr. President, the desk is clear. All right, do we have any announcements, colleagues?
... Jefferson High School, Mayor V. Rogoso, state of the city, home of the Democrats at Jefferson High School, and it's at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. If we could ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. All right, well, if I could ask everybody to please rise.
Eric.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Sidney Harmon, who's husband of my friend, Congresswoman Jane Harmon, and, you know, just a well-known, a great American. Sidney passed away last night from complications from leukemia. He lived a long, great life, he was 92 years old. He was born in 1918 to American parents in Montreal, one of nine children, including a twin sister, he grew up in New York. He graduated from the City University of New York in 1939 and received a doctorate from New York's Union Institute. The path of Sidney Harmon's long career took him from the electronics industry to government, academia, and finally, the fourth estate. Harmon's name is familiar to nearly everyone who grew up in a home with a high-fidelity stereo sound system. In 1953, he founded Harmon Carden Incorporated, an electronic pioneer that developed an aesthetically pleasing home stereo system with cutting-edge sound. They became the first manufacturers who put an amplifier, a preamp, and radio tuner into a single unit that looked like a piece of furniture, we all had one. In 1977, he was picked by President Jimmy Carter to be Deputy Secretary of Commerce. In 1980, at 62, Harmon married his second wife. His Janie, as he affectionately called her, was 27 years his junior, and Jane, of course, as we all know, would become a member of Congress in 1992. Sidney, a philanthropist, bought Newsweek last year. His passion for the arts and philanthropic impulses led him to provide funding for Washington DC Sidney Harmon Hall, a popular performance space and home of Washington's Shakespeare Theatre Company. From heart, he could recite long passages from Shakespeare, or Abraham Lincoln, or Alfred Lloyd Tennyson, and would often regale dinner party guests with an apt quote. Anyone who attended a Jane Harmon event would be treated to Sidney's favorite quote from Tennyson's Ulysses: "Though much is taken, much abides; and though we are not now that strength which in the old days moved earth and heaven, that which we are, we are: One equal temper of heroic hearts made weak by time and fate, but strong in will, to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." My thoughts and prayers are with Sidney, Jane, their family, he survived by his wife Jane, children Lynn, Gina, Barbara, Paul, Daniel, Justine, stepchildren Brian and Hillary, and 10 grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenoff, I'd like to co-present.
And I appreciate what Ms. Hahn said, but I've known Sidney for a long time, and he was a constituent of mine, and the last time I saw him, his energy was incredible. I introduced Jane at an event, and I worked on my introduction, to be candid with you, and when it was over, he came running over to me and he said, "Bill," he said, "I've never heard it better said than what you did." And Jane looked at me, and we laughed, and we hugged some more, but I'd like to add a little bit to what my colleague just said. In the 60s, Sidney was an active opponent of the Vietnam War, and for a year taught African-American pupils in Prince Edwards County, Virginia, after public schools there were closed in a notorious effort to avoid desegregation. From 1968 to 1971, he was president of Friends World College, a Quaker institution in Suffolk County, and in 1973, he earned a doctorate from the Cincinnati-based Union Institute and University. There's a lot more to say, but it was said, and as we once did a memorial here for Joe Sorel, there are many of us who can speak from the heart about a relationship with someone who's impacted our lives. I've known him well for 30 years, and I saw how Jane, after they met during the Carter administration, they fell in love, and they became a very strong, feeding off of each other kind of a relationship, I think all relationships of love should be, and I could see Jane light up, and there was only one person who could really tell Jane what he needed to, and it was him, and there was only one person who could tell Sidney what he needed to hear. So, they always laughed a lot, and I would find them on Venice Beach actually doing power walks together in his later years, and when he had written a book, I had him on my show, and we talked about that book that he had done, and what an inspiration to make it to 93-ish is where he ended up, but with the energy of even buying Newsweek the year before and continuing to do other things, gives us all hope that we can continue to live in such a way and make such a big difference in people's lives. I just left Jane a message on her personal cell, giving her our condolences and telling her that our city council was going to be adjourning in his memory this morning. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, thank you, we'll put all members on that. Are there adjourning motions? Anybody else have adjourning motions today? Mr. Coretts?
So, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of a great man of medicine, Dr. Michael Eisenberg, who passed away peacefully in his sleep on February 24th, a month after his 80th birthday. He not only touched countless lives, he saved countless lives through his deft work as an extraordinary surgeon, and by virtue of his important efforts as an educator and inventor, devoted to the care and treatment of those in need. While much of his career took place on the East Coast, he made a huge impact whenever he was here in Los Angeles, both professionally and through his wonderful connections with students, friends, and family. He was born in 1931 in Brooklyn, and from humble beginnings, he was a Phi Beta Chi graduate from NYU, graduating from Harvard Medical School with honors. He was a surgical intern at Peter Brent Brigham Young Hospital in Boston. He had a number of other notable medical achievements and positions. He finished his illustrious career as a professor of surgery in New York Hospital, Cornell University Medical College, and Director of Surgical Education at Cornell. Throughout his life, he volunteered his services as a surgeon to veterans hospitals wherever he was based, including Los Angeles, Minneapolis, Brooklyn, New York, and to the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. Popular with his students, Dr. Eisenberg was selected five times by the medical students of Wild Cornell Medical College to be on the senior list, which recognizes faculty members who made a commitment and demonstrated excellence in teaching. The author of 180 articles, books, and book chapters, he has lectured in universities from Tokyo to Moscow. His book for the layperson on ulcers was a bestseller published by Random House. Dr. Eisenberg also holds a patent on disposable intravenous needles, and designed the original triple blood bag system for separating platelets and white blood cells from whole blood, which he donated that patent to the benefit of mankind rather than for his own profit. Dr. Eisenberg was an active member of many prestigious medical societies, including the American College of Surgeons, American Board of Surgery, Society of University Surgeons, and served as president of the International Society of Gastrointestinal Surgeons. Not only a doctor, he was a Renaissance man who never lost his love of literature, and while at the University of Minnesota, he taught an honors course in English literature. He was a serious art collector with a museum-worthy private collection, and later in life was a volunteer researcher at the Whitney in New York City. He was an avid moviegoer and film buff, a passion which inspired his three daughters, all of whom worked in the entertainment business, including his eldest daughter, who was a longtime executive at Warner Brothers, his middle daughter, who was an executive at Viacom, and his youngest daughter, who was written for several television series and was a stand-up comedian, which Mike relished as he was widely known for his own great sense of humor. His first marriage to Carol Cosson Cleveland ended in divorce, he is survived by his wife of 27 years, Barbara Yetka Eisenberg. His daughters from his first marriage, including, excuse me, Ellen, Andrea, and Elise. His grandchildren, Gabrielle and Tom. His stepmother, Mady Eisenberg, who resides in Los Angeles. His daughter, Elise, who is also a Public Facilities Commissioner for the City of West Hollywood, is joining us here today, and so I welcome her while we offer her our city's condolences. Our city, nation, world are better places because we are blessed by the healing skills, social conscience, and personal grace of Dr. Eisenberg.
Thank you. Are there any other adjourning motions today? Mr. Labange?
Yeah, just there, I want to make sure I'm okay with the city attorney on this. Ironically, 40 years ago today, on the 13th of April, my father died, and this city council adjourned in his memory. And at one point several years ago, I found in the family boxes the adjournment motion that all signed for his honor. So, he was a great Angelino, born in Los Angeles, was at the Los Angeles Times when it was an honorable newspaper from 1937 to 1947, and then beyond, I'm smiling, Jen, and then worked for the Catholic Catties, and a father of eight sons, and had a lovely wife, Mary Louise. So, I just thought it was important, 40 years, 40 years ago, 40 years ago. So, every day's a blessing, so I...
What was his full name, Mr. Labange?
Robert Stanton Labange.
May he rest in peace. God rest his soul. Thank you. With that, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. Thank you. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned, will next be in session this Friday, the 15th, for our next meeting.